¿Cómo sería América si se estableciera para beneficiar a la gente cotidiana en lugar de las grandes corporaciones? Y él sabe de qué estábamos hablando. No tiene delusiones. Tiene la experiencia en las tierras. Ha estado en la Cámara y el Senado durante los últimos 30 años. Ha estado en el calefro de lo que es nuestro sistema político hoy en día. Y por eso va a poder deshacer el basura por el derrame. Sabes, no veo a Bernie como un político en el sentido normal de la palabra. Es un peleador por la justicia. Social, económico y racial. Y utiliza la política como un medio para ese fin. Sabes, antes de Bernie, nunca tuve un alcalde que representara mis valores. O un congresista, o un senador. Y simplemente no puedo decirte lo bien se siente. Así que quiero darle un vistazo de lo que me ha hecho tan emocionado de ver a este tipo en la Casa Blanca. Durante los últimos 40 años, he sido un miembro constituyente de Bernie. He visto cómo es firme y determinado. Y cómo enfocado está. Y durante las cuatro décadas pasadas, ha trabajado consistentemente para mejorar la calidad de la vida para la gente cotidiana y las que están opresas. Sabes, es temporada política presidencial. Vas a tener una montaña de tipos que vienen y dicen muchas cosas muy buenas, dulces, bonitas. Pero este es un tipo que ha llevado la charla y la ha llevado durante los últimos 40 años. En 1980, cuando Ben &amp; Jerry's estaba empezando, Bernie ganó una victoria improbable sobre un demócrata, viejo crony, buen chico de edad, político. Y se convirtió en mi alcalde cuando ganó por 10 votos. Su primer acto fue cerrar planes para privatizar la costa del lago Champlain con condominios de alto nivel. Y lo que hizo fue ir a esos desarrolladores y decir: “No, existe algo como acceso público”. Y Bernie pudo luchar con ellos y convertir esa tierra en lo que ahora es un parque público con la costa abierta a todos de Burlington. Y luego, cuando se convirtió en mi congresista, personalmente llevó cargos de ancianos a través de la frontera a Canadá para que pudieran comprar sus medicamentos de prescripción a precios decentes. Elegía contra NAFTA. Antes de ser contra NAFTA, era cool. Elegía contra ir a la guerra en Irak dos veces. Luego, en 2007, derrotó al hombre más rico de Vermont para convertirse en mi senador. Como senador, trabajó juntos con los conservadores para forzar lo que se convirtió en el primer auditorio de la Reserva Federal. Sabes, es este gran banco que tiene un montón de dinero. ¿Qué puedo decir? Y ese auditorio descubrió que les había dado 16 billones de dólares en préstamos de bilsa ultra bajo interés a bancos de Wall Street después del colapso en 2008. Y que había muchos conflictos de interés. Luego, lideró un éxito para detener el llamado CPI de cadena, que habría reducido los beneficios a las personas que obtienen la seguridad social y a los veteranos desactivados. Y el último septiembre, Bernie introdujo la Acta de Stop Bezos. Eso significa Stop Bad Employers by Zeroing Out Subsidies. Y requiere que las grandes corporaciones que pagan salarios sucios reembolsen al gobierno por las tarjetas alimenticias y los beneficios de Medicaid que necesitan sus empleados para sobrevivir. Un mes después de que lo introdujera, Jeff Bezos, CEO de Amazon, aumentó su salario mínimo a 15 dólares por hora. Y ahora, en esta situación políticamente dividida que encontramos hoy en día, fue Bernie quien pudo reunir a los republicanos y demócratas para pasar una resolución en la Cámara y el Senado para sacar a Estados Unidos de esta guerra en Yemen. Sabes, cuando... Eso fue algo bueno. Cuando Bernie se candidó para presidente por primera vez y dijo que no iba a tomar ningún dinero grande, pensé que era un error. Pensé que nunca podría poder aumentar suficiente dinero para dirigir una campaña credible. Y luego llegué a entenderlo. Sabía que si no podía aumentar suficiente dinero a través de donaciones individuales de pequeños donantes, que no quería ser presidente. Porque entonces no tendría la armada de personas detrás de él que necesitaba para realmente lograr la transformación que necesita pasar una vez lo ponemos en la Casa Blanca. Así que, ¿qué pienso de Bernie, el hombre? Bueno, ha sido casi igual. Quiero decir, ha sido consistente. Ha entendido que nuestro país, nuestro gobierno, ha sido tomado por grandes corporaciones y tenemos que atacarlo siempre queremos convertirnos en nada más que ponce en esta economía. Nunca se abandona. Tiene una visión clara. Tiene una visión de cómo hacer que América vuelva a ser buena. Y continuamente viene con formas innovadoras de hacerlo. No es un tipo sofisticado. Es muy agradable, sin herederos. Y me gusta su cabello. Eso nunca cambia tampoco. No va con las tendencias. Se establecen las tendencias. Solo mira a todos los otros candidatos que ahora están haciendo campañas de donación de pequeños donantes. Salud universal. Colegas y universidades financiadas públicamente. Bernie, mi alcalde, el impulsador de las tendencias. ¿Quién sabía? Pero ya está liderando el país. Y ahora es mi honor presentarles al primer, original, auténtico, único y único presidente de los Estados Unidos de América. Señoras y señores, el senador Bernie Sanders.
Gracias. Muchas gracias. Gracias, Spencer. Gracias a todos por estar aquí. Y permítanme agradecer a la gente que ya ha hablado. Jay Lyon, Tessa, Wes Weber. Permítanme agradecer a Ro Khanna. Ben mencionó algo sobre esto. Ro lideró el esfuerzo en la Cámara. Y yo lideré el esfuerzo en el Senado para finalmente lograr que el Congreso de Estados Unidos reclame su responsabilidad constitucional sobre temas de guerra y paz. Es un gran tema. Durante mucho tiempo, como todos ustedes saben, bajo la liderazgo demócrata en la Casa Blanca, bajo los presidentes republicanos, el Congreso ha permitido al presidente decidir cuándo nuestras tropas se colocan en peligro. Y por primera vez en 45 años después de que la Ley de Poders de Guerra fuera aprobada, el Senado y la Cámara votaron para terminar la participación de Estados Unidos en la horrible guerra ahora en Yemen liderada por Arabia Saudí. Desafortunadamente, Trump vetó esa resolución bipartidista. Pero volveremos de nuevo en Yemen ahora mismo. Quiero que todos sepan. Estamos hablando de un informe de las Naciones Unidas que nos dice que 85,000 niños ya han morido de hambre. Y si esta guerra continúa, estamos hablando de 200,000 personas muriendo al final de la guerra. Todo esto para avanzar las ambiciones de Mohammed bin Salman, el dictador en Arabia Saudí. Estados Unidos no debería ser parte de esa guerra. Y continuaré haciendo todo lo que pueda para salir de esa guerra. Lo que quiero hacer hoy es hablar de la política de una manera que creo que no se habla a menudo. La verdad es que la política no es complicada. Los medios te dirán que la política es sobre cuánto dinero he levantado o otras personas. Es sobre el último ponefort. Es sobre algo tonto que dije en Spencer, Iowa. Esperemos que no suceda. Si caigo en una banana, será una historia de primera página. Pero la verdad es que eso no es de la política. La política es de tres cosas. Eso es todo lo que es. Es una evaluación honesta, que no es tan fácil. Pero es una evaluación honesta de lo que está pasando en nuestras comunidades, en nuestro estado, en nuestro país. ¿Qué está pasando? Y la segunda parte después de hacer esa evaluación es dónde queremos ir como país. ¿Qué clase de nación queremos convertirnos? Y la gente honesta tiene diferencias de opinión sobre eso. Y la tercera parte, por supuesto, es cómo llegamos allí. Eso es todo. ¿Entonces qué está pasando en América hoy? Bueno, algunas cosas buenas. La tasa de desempleo es baja. Relativamente baja. Como algunos de ustedes pueden saber, en 2010, después de la horrenda recesión de Wall Street causada por la codicia, irresponsabilidades y comportamiento ilegal de Wall Street, el desempleo aumentó. En 2010, el desempleo era del 10%. Mucha gente estaba herida. Pero luego, a lo largo de los años, cuando Obama dejó el cargo, estaba a 4,5%. Dos años después, bajo Trump, ahora está a 3,5%. Y eso es relativamente bajo, y eso es algo bueno. Pero cuando pensamos en lo que está pasando en América, ¿es simplemente cierto lo que Trump está diciendo? Hey, todo está genial. La economía está haciendo fantásticamente. ¿Es eso cierto? Así que quiero que piensen en ello por un minuto. Vamos a hablar de ello. Vamos a partir de la gente pequeña a la gente vieja. ¿Cómo hacemos con los niños en Estados Unidos de América? ¿Tratamos a los niños con el respeto que merece el futuro de este país? Todos ustedes saben que en Estados Unidos de América, el país más rico de la historia del mundo, tenemos uno de los niveles de pobreza infantil más altos de la población en cualquier país de la Tierra. Tenemos uno de los niveles de mortalidad infantil más altos de cualquier país de la Tierra. Alto para los blancos, increíblemente alto para los afroamericanos. ¿Saben que nuestro sistema de cuidado infantil y pre-K es disfuncional? ¿Cuánto costará si puedes encontrar un cuidado infantil de calidad en Spencer? ¿Cuánto costará o en Iowa? ¿Alguien no? Depende de dónde vayas, está bien. 15,000. Está bien. Así que, sabes, varía en Vermont, 12,000, 15,000. Hay alguien que trabaja para mí en mi oficina de D.C. Ella tuvo a su hijo en un centro de cuidado infantil de buena calidad. ¿Sabes cuánto costaría un año? 30,000 dólares. Así que en D.C., es más caro que en Spencer o Burlington, Vermont. Pero es alto en todo el país. Así que si eres una familia trabajadora, madre y padre ganando 70, 80,000 dólares al año, ¿cómo pagas 15,000 o 12,000 dólares por cuidado infantil? Y la verdad es que en el cuidado infantil, muchos de los trabajadores están sin pago con muy poco beneficio. ¿Y nuestro sistema educativo? En todo este país, yo estaba en Detroit hace unas semanas. Tienen 200 vacantes para maestros porque la escala de los salarios es tan baja que no pueden atrar a la gente. Tal vez hayan leído recientemente que en Carolina South y Carolina North, los maestros salieron a las calles luchando por que sus hijos obtengan una educación decente. Está en América donde estamos sin pagar a los maestros y no les están dando el respeto que les deben. Entonces, un niño se gradúa de la escuela secundaria, si es o ella es afortunado y hace eso, quiere ir a la universidad. ¿Cómo estamos en la universidad? ¿Todo el mundo puede ir a la universidad? ¿No es un problema? No casi. Tenemos cientos de miles de jóvenes brillantes que vienen de familias que no tienen mucho dinero, que no pueden pagar para ir a la universidad. ¿Y qué pasa con millones de personas después de que se gradúen de la universidad? Están encargados de una deuda increíble. Hace unas semanas, conocí a algunos jóvenes de la Universidad Howard que están en educación. Un joven dice: “Hey, tengo una deuda de 178,000 dólares. ¿Cómo voy a pagar eso con el salario de un maestro?”. Hablé con un joven médico en Burlington, Vermont. 300,000 dólares de deuda por el crimen de ir a la escuela médica. Hablé con un joven dueño de deudas en Des Moines, Iowa. 400,000 dólares de deuda. Así que tienes millones de personas en este país que están luchando por pagar niveles alarmantes de deuda de estudiantes por el crimen de obtener la educación que necesitan. No me hace mucho sentido. Luego, la economía es donde decimos que el desempleo es bajo. Eso es bueno. ¿Y los salarios que los trabajadores están ganando? ¿Cuántas personas conoces aquí en Iowa o en Vermont que trabajan dos o tres trabajos para cobrar suficiente ingreso para pagar las tarjetas para sus familias? Así que déjanos ser muy claros que en América hoy en día, no se puede conseguir por 9 dólares por hora o 10 dólares por hora. Esa es una tarifa de hambre. Y hablemos del hecho de que la mitad de las familias en América hoy en día, increíblemente, están viviendo de pago a pago. Y veo algunas cabezas sonando. Y lo que de pago a pago significa es que si tu automóvil se rompe, puede que no tengas el dinero para reparar el automóvil. Y si no puedes reparar el automóvil, no puedes ir al trabajo. Y si no puedes ir al trabajo, te despiden. Y si te despiden, no puedes cuidar de tus hijos. Miliones de personas preocupadas por cómo van a pagar el pago de la luz. ¿Cómo van a poner gas en el automóvil? Tienes millones de personas en América hoy en día pagando 40, 50, 60% de sus ingresos limitados en vivienda, poniendo un arco sobre sus cabezas. Y hablas de trabajadores mayores. Tienes un 40% de los trabajadores mayores en América que no tienen reservas cuando se acercan al jubilarse. Ahora, piensen en por qué somos una nación tan estresada. Vuelvo a todo el país y veo estrés en la cara de muchas personas. Y el estrés es que están preocupados. ¿Qué va a pasar? ¿Cómo van a sobrevivir? Así que si tienes 60 años de edad y no tienes nada en la banca y vas a jubilarte en cinco años, ¿sabes qué? Tienes derecho a estar estresado. Y luego, encima de todo eso, todo siendo igual, a pesar de enormes incrementos en productividad y una explosión en tecnología, ¿adivinen qué, jóvenes? La probabilidad es que, a menos que lo volvamos a cambiar, vuestra generación tendrá un estándar de vida menor que los vuestros padres. Dejas la escuela más en deuda. Las trabajas que recibes en muchos casos, en dólares reales, pagan menos. Es difícil para ti encontrar vivienda asequible. Y luego, cuando hablamos de lo que está pasando en la economía, por favor entiendan, no hablan mucho de esto en la TV o en los periódicos, pero entiendan que el ingreso y la riqueza desigualdad en este país hoy en día es peor que en cualquier momento desde los 2000. ¿Qué significa eso? Lo que significa en América, y quiero que aprecien esto y laven con esto y me digan en tu corazón si creen que esto es de lo que es América. Hoy en América, tres familias tienen más riqueza que la mitad inferior del pueblo americano. Eso es 160 millones de personas por debajo, tres familias por encima. Hoy en América, el 1% superior tiene más riqueza que la mitad del 92% inferior. Hoy en América, mientras que la gente en Iowa trabaja dos o tres trabajos, el 49% de todos los ingresos nuevos va al 1% superior. Hoy en América, los CEOs de grandes corporaciones ganan 300 veces lo que hacen sus trabajadores. Hoy en América, los 25 mejores administradores de fondos de riesgos ganan el doble de ingreso que 340,000 maestros de kindergarten en Estados Unidos de América. Así que tenemos una economía... Y Trump tiene razón cuando dice que la economía está haciendo bien. Pero está haciendo realmente, realmente bien para la gente por encima. Y lo que esta campaña trata es crear una economía que funciona bien para todos nuestros people, no solo al 1%. Pero para hacerlo, vamos a tener que laver, no solo con la economía, vamos a tener que laver con un sistema político corrupto. ¿Y qué significa eso? En Vermont, tenemos reuniones de ciudad cada año. Lo han tenido desde el comienzo de la historia de nuestro estado. Y eso significa que una vez al año, la gente se une y discuten sobre cuánto dinero quieren gastar en las escuelas, cuánto dinero quieren gastar en las carreteras, cuánto dinero quieren gastar en el gobierno local. Discuten sin... La gente levanta las manos y la mayoría gana, y eso es todo. Bueno, lo que tenemos en América hoy en día no es una persona, uno vota. Tienes un sistema político corrupto que fue hecho peor como resultado de esta desastrosa decisión de la Corte Suprema Unidos, que vamos a revertir. Que permite a los bilionarios comprar elecciones. Así que déjenme ser muy directo con ustedes. Para mí, la democracia americana no es sobre los hermanos Koch y otros bilionarios gastando cientos de millones de dólares para apoyar a candidatos que representan a los ricos y los poderosos. La democracia es una persona, uno voto. Y no solo vamos a revertir Citizens United, vamos a pasar a financiar las elecciones públicas. Y también vamos a terminar con los tipos alarmantes de germandería que estamos viendo en todo este país. Y... Y digo esto casi todos los días y lo diré de nuevo. Vamos a terminar con esta supresión de votantes cobarde que los gobernadores republicanos están haciendo en todo América. He ido a la oficina de alcalde en Vermont muchas, muchas veces. He perdido y he ganado. Pero nunca me ocurrió, y creo que la mayoría de los candidatos, sentarse y decir: “Estoy fuerte en esta parte del estado” o “Estoy débil en esa parte del estado” o “Estas personas votarán por mí y estas no”. ¿Cómo puedo mantener a la gente que votará en contra de mí? Pero ahora mismo, lo que tenemos en Nueva Hampshire, legislatura republicana y gobernador haciendo muy difícil para los jóvenes votar. En Georgia y otros estados del Sur haciendo muy difícil para las personas de color votar. En Tennessee, ahora mismo, haciendo difícil para las personas hacer registro de votantes. Así que digo a esos gobernadores republicanos: “Si no tienes las ganas de participar en elecciones libres, justas y abiertas, sal de la política y haz otro trabajo”. Ahora, quiero agradecer a la gente de Iowa porque no solo ustedes saben que juegan un rol excesivo en la política americana. Y habiendo estado por todo el estado, aprecio mucho que ustedes tomen sus responsabilidades, que son responsabilidades muy serias. Ustedes son el primer estado en América que vota en un caucus presidencial. Y he sido profundamente impresionado por la gente, no importa a quién puedan votar, que tomen esa responsabilidad seriamente. Están tratando de entender de dónde vienen los candidatos y castigan el mejor voto que pueden. Ahora, cuatro años atrás, vine a Iowa y estaba, como recuerdo, en el 4% en los pones. Y creo que es justo decir que la mayoría de la gente en Iowa nunca había oído hablar del senador junior. Sí, soy el senador junior, de Vermont. Pat Lay es mayor que mí. Y lo que entonces comencé a hacer fue ir por todo el estado, por todo el estado. Y acabamos haciendo, como recuerdo, unos 112 reuniones como esta, algunas más grandes, algunas más pequeñas. Y acabamos hablando con alrededor de 73,000 personas en el estado de Iowa. Entramos a Iowa en el 4% en los pones en la noche de caucus. Terminamos con un 50% de los votos. Y porque sorprendimos a todo el mundo aquí en Iowa, acabamos yendo a Nueva Hampshire, donde hicimos muy bien. Y acabamos ganando 22 estados en América. Terminamos obteniendo más de 13 millones de votos. Y terminamos con más de 1,700 delegados a la Conferencia Nacional Demócrata. Ahora, eso es importante. Pero déjenme decirles lo que es más importante. Cuando entré a Iowa y empecé a hablar de la plataforma en la que estaba dirigiendo, lo que pensé que teníamos que hacer como nación, mis oponentes políticos, y ellos eran y eran legion, dijeron: “Bernie, eres un tipo bueno, pero estás loco. Nadie en América está de acuerdo con tus ideas. Eres un extremista. Estás muy, muy, muy fuera de contacto, gente de Iowa, gente de América”. Y, ya saben, los periódicos editoriales dijeron: “Bernie, buen tipo”. Pero nadie cree en lo que está diciendo. Y lo que Iowa mostró en ese primer caucus, y enormemente importante, que las ideas que estábamos hablando no eran extremas, no eran radicales, pero fueron precisamente lo que el pueblo americano quería ver. Gracias, Iowa. Cuando fui a Iowa cuatro años atrás, dije, habiendo hablado con la gente en Iowa, la gente no puede llegar a 8, 9 dólares por hora. Tenemos que aumentar el salario mínimo a un salario de 15 dólares por hora. Y me dijeron: “Bernie, eso es demasiado loco. Sabes, el salario mínimo nacional es 7 1/4”. ¿Qué es aquí en Iowa ahora? ¿7 1/4? Está bien. Estás hablando de doblar el salario mínimo. No puede ser hecho. Tal vez 8 dólares, tal vez 9 dólares. ¿Cómo vas a aumentarlo a 15 dólares por hora? Bueno, resultó que eso es exactamente lo que el pueblo americano durante un periodo de cuatro años quería ver. Y estoy feliz de decirles que seis estados en este país ya han aprobado legislación que se mueve a 15 dólares por hora. Y más importante, esa idea loca y loca será aprobada por la Casa de Representantes de Estados Unidos en los próximos meses. Y por cierto, cuando ese proyecto aprobado, que será aprobado en la Cámara y llega al Senado, necesito su ayuda mucho. Porque he presentado el proyecto Compañero en el Senado. Necesito su ayuda para decirle a los senadores Ernst y Grassley que la gente no puede llegar a 9 dólares por hora. Tienen que votar con nosotros para un salario mínimo de 15 dólares por hora. Y luego dije, y esto es algo... ¿Están listos para algo realmente radical? No quiero que salgan de la puerta. Hay gente en camino ahí. Está bien, esto es lo que dije. Y esto fue metido, fue enfrentado con una oposición muy, muy fuerte. Dije, sabes, es un desastre internacional que Estados Unidos de América es el único país mayor en la Tierra no garantice la salud a todas las personas como derecho. is the only major country on earth not to guarantee health care to all people as a right. And I was told that this is un-American, it's not the way we do it, because I was told everybody loves the insurance companies. Oh my God. Imagine that, United Health Care? Oh wow. We love the insurance companies. And Bernie, why are you trying to move toward a Medicare for All? Well, four years have come and gone, and poll after poll shows, in fact, that the American people support a Medicare for All, single payer system. Thank you, Iowa, for helping us. Four years ago, I said, take a look at the infrastructure in this country. In my state, people have disappeared down potholes. We have many, many bridges that are in terrible disrepair. It's true all over this country. In Iowa, I have learned that you have a little bit of a water problem, right? Just a little bit. And that's true all over the country. We had a rail system which is nowhere near where it should be. And when I talk about infrastructure, I talk about affordable housing as well. And I said, let's spend a trillion dollars to create 15 million jobs rebuilding our infrastructure. And I was told, once again, a trillion dollars? Wow, can't be done. Now I find myself, you heard Ro Khanna say, they're now talking about $2 trillion. All right, and that's good. Point is, we said and recognize that in the wealthiest country in the history of the world, our bridges and our roads and our water systems should not be falling apart. So we're gonna invest, whether it's a trillion or $2 trillion, to rebuild our crumbling infrastructure, and when we do that, we are gonna create up to 15 million good-paying jobs. When we talk about what makes a nation great, it is not, in my view, the number of billionaires that we have. It is not, in my view, the number of nuclear weapons that we have. It's how we treat the most vulnerable people in the society. And that is children, and that is the elderly. Unbelievably, well, I should not use the word unbelievably anymore. Nothing is unbelievable in today's world. But we have Republican leadership who, after giving a trillion and a half dollars in tax breaks to the top 1% and large profitable corporations, they have concluded that they have to, they're now worried about the deficit and the way they're gonna deal with the deficit is cut Social Security, Medicare and Medicaid. Well, four years ago, I said, and I repeat it now, we are not gonna cut Social Security. We're gonna expand Social Security. 20%, 20% of seniors in this country are living on Social Security benefits, total income of less than $13,500. Think about that. Think about being 80 years old and trying to live on that money. So we're gonna lift the cap on taxable income, we're gonna extend Social Security for another 50 years, and we're gonna raise benefits for people who need them on Social Security. Four years ago, during the campaign, I think it was in 2016, I was on a national TV debate. And the moderator asked the candidates what they thought the great national security issue facing the country was. And I think almost everybody thought that I would say, well, it's ISIS or it's Al Qaeda, and those are very serious threats to our country. But I said that the greatest national security threat that our country faces is climate change. And literally, if my memory is correct, the moderator laughed. People are not laughing now, because whatever world Trump may live in with regard to climate change, the scientists are very clear. And what they are clear about is that we have all of 12 years to transform our energy system away from fossil fuel to substantially cut back on carbon emissions, to move to energy efficiency and sustainable energy. And my friends, you know, this is not, in a sense, a debatable issue. It's not what, well, maybe yes, maybe no. As human beings, we have a moral responsibility to leave this planet in a healthy and habitable way for our kids and our grandchildren. This is not an option. This is what we have got to do. Four years ago, I suggested that in the midst of massive income and wealth inequality, we should have a tax system which demands that the wealthiest people and large private corporations that are profitable start paying their fair share of taxes. Anybody here happen to know how much Amazon paid in federal income tax last year? You got it. Amazon is owned by the wealthiest guy in America, worth about $150 billion. Paid nothing, Amazon paid nothing in federal income tax, but it's not just Amazon. Dozens and dozens of other major corporations also paid nothing in federal income taxes. So let me say to Mr. Bezos and to the owners of other major corporations, those days under a Sanders administration will be long gone. You are gonna start paying your fair share of taxes. Four years ago, we talked about a criminal justice system which is severely broken. And I want you to put your minds around this one. We have more people in jail in the United States now than any other major country on earth. We have over 2 million people in jail, more than China has. And today, what we have is a system which is spending $80 billion a year to lock up fellow Americans, $80 billion at the local, state and federal level. Meanwhile, we have kids who are dropping out of school, kids who are hanging out on street corners, who cannot, do not have the skills or the education to do the jobs that are available to them. So are you ready for me to repeat a radical idea that I said four years ago? All right, here it is, another one. You ready for this one? All right. Maybe, just maybe, we should invest in our young people in education and jobs and not build more jails or throw more people into jail. Terms of an issue that is getting a lot of attention, we have a president of the United States who, for his own demagogic and political reasons, is choosing to demonize immigrants. And that is, to me, as the son of an immigrant, my dad came to this country at the age of 17 with no money and couldn't speak a word of English. I take this one a little bit personally. Instead of demonizing immigrants, I believe that we should move toward comprehensive immigration reform and a path toward citizenship for the 10 million undocumented. I believe that we should provide immediate legal protection for the 1.8 million young people eligible for the DACA program. And I believe that we should have a humane border policy for those seeking asylum. America is not and must never be a nation that snatches babies from the arms of their mothers. Four years ago, we said that if we're gonna represent the American people, we don't want a super PAC funded by billionaires and millionaires. And that was seen, as Ro Khanna said, as a very radical idea. Because what politics has always been in this country, bottom line is, candidates go out and they hustle money from wealthy people, they hire consultants, they put dumb 30-second ads on television. And that's kind of what politics is about. And we said, no, I think we're gonna do it a different way. We're gonna ask working people and middle-class people to help us run this campaign. Four years ago, we ended up with an average contribution of $27. And we showed the world that you can run a serious campaign without begging wealthy people for campaign contributions. And I'm happy to tell you that many of my opponents in the Democratic primary understand that as well. So we've made some real change in that. Four years ago, I was a little bit concerned that before the first vote was cast here in Iowa in the Democratic primary, my opponent of that time already had 500 superdelegates lined up in support of him. And they're like, maybe that is not really the way we should do politics in the Democratic Party. And I said, you know, maybe superdelegates, the wealthy, the campaign contributors, the inside-the-beltweight power guys, maybe they should not be the people influencing in the kind of way they do who the next president of the United States is. And guess what? Turns out that we were successful over the last year to get superdelegates out of the So my point here is that whether the issue is criminal justice and the movement to decriminalize and legalize marijuana, whether it is... Whether it is seeing significant movement toward raising the minimum wage to a living wage, whether it is seeing the trade unions in this country become more militant as they stand up and fight for their workers, whether it is the effort to make sure that the wealthy and powerful start paying their fair share of taxes, we are making progress. And in many ways, that political revolution, the change in the political conversation in America, started right here in Iowa four years ago. Four years ago, we began the political revolution. I am here today to ask you to travel with me down the road so that we complete what we started four years ago. Let me just very briefly tell you what the message of our campaign is. It is "us, not me." What does that mean? Is that just a bumper sticker or is it something deeper than that? Tell me, but what do you think it is? What does it mean? Stand up.
We all need to come together and work together to get what we want for our country.
What is your name?
Michelle.
All right. What Michelle said is true, but I'll tell you something else about it. Who else wants to add to that discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Somebody that you used to know said, "We all do better, but we all do better."
Yes? That's Paul Welford, wasn't it? Other thoughts, way in the back there? Good. That's Abraham Lincoln or something. Other thoughts on what that means? What it means to me is that, and let me, it means that no president, not the best-intentioned and most honest president of the United States, can in fact do it alone. And the reason for that is that the powers that be, and you don't see this on television at all, this is something that we don't discuss as a nation, and you'll understand why we don't discuss it. The power structure of this country is such that the folks who have the wealth and the power will fight in every way they can against progress being made by working families. Let me give you just a few examples. Today, we have on Wall Street six financial institutions that have assets equivalent to 54% of the GDP of the United States. Six institutions that control the flow of trillions of dollars. And many of the people on Wall Street are billionaires. And I remember very clearly one of the leaders of Wall Street, if you can believe this, talk about greed, coming onto Capitol Hill and saying, you know what? Not only do we have to deregulate Wall Street again, but we have to cut Social Security, Medicare and Medicaid. So you have incredible power and unlimited amounts of money fighting to protect their own greed and their own benefits. What about the drug companies? Last year, the top 10 drug companies in America made $69 billion in profit. Meanwhile, because of their power and unlimited amounts of money, the medicine you need can double in price tomorrow, because there is no war stopping that. In fact, in America today, we pay double what the people of other countries around the world are paying. And right now, we are seeing the drug companies and the insurance companies and other people in the health care industry coming together, and they will end up spending hundreds of millions of dollars to try to prevent us from moving toward Medicare for All. You will see 30-second ads, mark my words, you will see 30-second ads on Iowa television telling you how terrible Bernie Sanders is, how terrible a Medicare for All system is. Because these people want to protect their profits and their compensation packages. The guy who is the head of Aetna today brought about a merger with CVS. You know how much he got as a bonus for bringing about that merger, which will raise health care prices in America? Anybody know? His name is Mr. Bertolini. He got a $500 million bonus. Guy who's head of United Health last year, company you are very familiar with in Iowa, made $83 million in compensation. Now, I have the radical idea that maybe what health care is about is providing quality care to every man, woman and child, and not seeing the drug companies and the insurance companies make billions of dollars in profit. And by the way, by the way, as somebody who knows the pharmaceutical industry extremely well and knows their greed, we are gonna lower prescription drug costs in this country And if you think that's a radical idea, it is not, because if we lower prices in this country by 50%, all we'll be doing is paying the same prices as people all over the world. So the message of "us, not me" means that the only way we bring about the change that this country needs, and that is decent-paying jobs. It means making sure that women get the same pay for the same work as men do. It means having a universal affordable childcare system. It means making public colleges and universities... It means making public colleges and universities tuition-free and reducing student debt. It means transforming our energy system away from fossil fuel. It means dealing with the criminal justice system that is so broken and bringing about a reform on immigration as well, and many, many other issues. So the reason that I say it is "us, not me" is that no president can do it alone. The history of change in this country, as all of you know, has never come from the top on down. It's never been a president who woke up one day and said, "I have a great idea. We are going to give women the right to vote." That's not how it happened. Women won the right to vote because they struggled for it. And no president said 100 or 150 years ago that we are going to allow workers to form unions. Workers stood up and fought to be treated, demanded to be treated with dignity and engage in collective bargaining. Nobody gave them that. They struggled for it. And it's the same thing with the civil rights movement, where millions of Americans, black and white, stood together to end segregation and demand that everybody in this country, regardless of the color of his or her skin, has the right to vote. And it's the same thing with the gay movement. I'm old enough to remember 20, 30 years ago, when people who were gay were embarrassed and afraid to acknowledge that reality. But with great courage, they stood up and fought back. So what I am saying today is that I am not running for president just to win. I am running for president because together, I want to see us transform this country and create a nation, a government, and economy that works for all of us, not just wealthy campaign contributors. That's what this campaign is about. Okay. Let me thank you all for being here. We've got some time to take some questions. I'd be happy to do that. Mr., you got a, you got a mic? We got an other mic or just one?
Just one.
Okay, she's fast.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have a question? Okay, we got a gentleman over here.
Yes, Mr. Sanders. Something in regards to access for everybody, free and open internet with the damage that a G-Pi has done. What would you do to help rectify that so that internet corporations don't have that access to provide fast lanes to people, charging people more money for the same quality and speed of service, especially in an age of technology where internet is vital to everyone?
You're absolutely right. And I think, you know, you've raised the whole big question about the power of Facebook and Google and the other people who control a lot of the digital world. But I believe that it is an outrage, and the internet is an extraordinary positive step. It works for small businesses, it works with small publications, and we cannot allow, and I will overturn what has been happening, we cannot allow large corporations to have an advantage over small businesses and get their word out in a quicker way than others who don't pay the price. So thank you very much for that question. Ma'am, right here, yeah.
Hi, my name is Rebecca, and I'm actually a mental health care provider and social worker in town, and...
And you're very popular, Rebecca.
Thank you. Yeah, there's not a lot of options anymore, unfortunately, but May is actually Mental Health Awareness Month, and in particular, in our rural community, I've been really alarmed and concerned about the number of suicides and the depression rates for our farmers. I'm wondering what your thoughts and plans are to address that.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for the important work you're doing. Let me deal with that question in two ways. Number one, when we talk about the United States having a healthcare crisis, it's not just the 34 million people have no health insurance and more are underinsured, it's not just that people can't afford the medicine that they need. It is that we do not have the doctors and the nurses and the psychologists and the counselors that we need where we need them. And that's especially true in rural America and in urban America as well. Okay? So if you're a wealthy person and you're living on Park Avenue in New York, you can find a good psychiatrist. But if you are a child living in a small town in Vermont or in Iowa, that is not necessarily the case. And one of the advantages of a Medicare for All system is it looks at the real problems and addresses the real problems, and is not designed simply to make significant profits for insurance and drug companies. So right now, as you know, all over this country, we have an epidemic, opioid epidemic, we have an epidemic with other drugs. Unbelievably, in America today, we are now in the third year where life expectancy has declined. Do you know that? Gone down. And the reason for that is what doctors refer to as diseases of despair. And that is when people give up hope, and this is happening right now in the farm community, where family farmers are being driven off the land by large agribusiness conglomerates. All right? So you're seeing farmers in this state and in the state of Vermont, we have the same problem. We're a dairy state, and we're losing farms every week, and it is a real, real tragedy. And what you're seeing is farmers being driven off the land, young people without any hope, turning to alcohol, drugs, and even alarming rates of suicide. So what we have got to do is make sure that people who need counseling get the counseling that they need. I will just relate to you one story, and I think probably every member of the Senate and the House has heard the same thing. My office, somebody called up my office, and they said, "I am worried about my brother. I am worried about what he will do to himself or somebody else. He needs help. We cannot find counseling that we can afford." And Vermont does better than most states in this regard. So when you have people in trouble, it is not asking too much that they get quality help to address their crises. Second point, though, just a little while ago, we talked to a whole lot of farmers about the crisis facing rural America. And that crisis has everything to do with the fact that we are losing thousands and thousands and thousands of family farmers today who are receiving payment for their crops that are below the cost of production. And we're seeing your state and many other parts of the country being turned into factory farm land. So one of the points that I made, and I repeat to you, as somebody who comes from a very, very rural state where agriculture is very important, I will do everything that I can to provide hope to farmers, to support family-based agriculture, and to take on the incredible level of consolidation that we are seeing in agribusiness today. Woman, right here.
Senator, I really appreciate your coming to Spencer, Iowa, but I have to confess, I live two blocks north of the Iowa border.
All right. I think we'll let you stay nonetheless.
I'm a physician, and I am really concerned about what is happening today with the Affordable Healthcare Act. We're all concerned about the next election, but what can you and your colleagues do to halt the decimation of this act? I have not one, not two, not three, but four pre-existing conditions.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your work. Let me take your question and kind of broaden it a little bit. That's what politicians do, you know? But I will answer the question. I am more than aware that in the state of Iowa, the people here voted for Donald Trump in 2016. And I understand why. I understand why. And I have never believed what some people say, that everybody who voted for Trump is a racist and a sexist and a homophobe and a xenophobe. I don't believe that. Some are, that's for sure. That is very sure. But it's not everybody, and you know that, because all of you know people who voted for Trump. Maybe some of you are here today. And I think the reason that Trump did so well in Iowa, Michigan, Wisconsin, Pennsylvania, and other states is that for too long, the political establishment has been ignoring not only rural America, but the suffering of working families. All right? So all over this state and all over this country, people cannot afford healthcare. People cannot afford their prescription drugs. People cannot afford decent housing. People are working two or three jobs. People are worried that their kids will have a lower standard of living than they do. And I would not be honest with you if I told you that the Democratic leadership addressed those issues and told the working families of this country that we are on your side and we're prepared to take on the big-money interests to make life better for you. I would not be telling you the truth if I told you that. And then Trump comes along, and he says, "I believe in healthcare for everybody." Trump says, "I am not going to cut Medicare or Medicaid or Social Security." Trump says, "When he comes to Iowa, I'm going to pass a tax bill that will not benefit the wealthy." Trump lied in every instance. Now, to get to your question. Trump and the Republican leadership tried to repeal the Affordable Care Act. Is the Affordable Care Act perfect? No, it is not. And that is why I'm fighting for a Medicare for All, single-payer program. But the Affordable Care Act did bring millions of people into health insurance coverage, and it did finally do what any sane system does and say that you will be able to get affordable insurance even if you have cancer or heart disease or diabetes. Think about it. That an insurance company say, "Oh, you have a history of breast cancer? Of course we're not going to insure you because we don't make any money out of you. It might recur again." How absurd is that? So we put in language to protect people who had pre-existing conditions. And we said to families that if your kid is under 26 years of age, you will be able to get the insurance that the family has. What the Republicans attempted to do, and came within one vote, and that vote was cast by the late John McCain. Came within one vote to throwing 32 million people off the healthcare they have. 32 million. Doing away with pre-existing conditions, leaving the kids who are 20 and 21 out on their own, raising premiums for seniors. It is beyond my comprehension how people could sleep at night after voting to throw 32 million people off the healthcare they have. And they have no program. Ask them, "What's the Republican leadership program?" They got nothing. The best they can come up with is some junk insurance program, which says, yes, we're going to make sure that you can get insurance at an affordable cost. Only problem is, it doesn't cover anything. It's a junk insurance plan, and it certainly will not protect people with pre-existing conditions. So we will do everything that we can, and I think it is clear, we have the votes, the House obviously will not support that, so rest assured right now. But Trump doesn't give up. He's back again, saying that he wants to repeal the Affordable Care Act and throw 32 million people off of healthcare. So I say to the people of Iowa, I can understand why you voted for Trump, because he said a lot of things that actually made sense. But unfortunately, it turns out that we have a president, and it gives me no pleasure to tell you this, who is a pathological liar. Okay, questions? Any questions here? Okay, you got a gentleman right there.
Senator, I'm very sorry if I sound nervous, but there's a situation in America and across the world where people go to school or go to work, and they threaten possibly even their lives with all the news of bombings and shootings that happen. And I go to school here at the Spencer High School, and almost every day, I go into school fearing for my life that someone might walk in one day and decide to take that away from us. What do you plan to do about that?
Thank you very much for raising that issue. And I fully did not appreciate... I'm sorry, your name is? Andrew. What Andrew says about going to school here in Iowa, Andrew, it's the same all over the country. And I hadn't really fully appreciated it. You know, when I was a kid, you go to school, and that's a safe place to be. But kids now are very frightened. I don't know if you do, do you do lockdown exercises in the school? Yeah, it's kids. Can you imagine little kids going through a lockdown process, fearing that some lunatic is going to walk into their school with a gun and start shooting up people? Andrew, what we have got to do is, I think, what the American people want us to do, and we just talk about a few things. I wish I can tell you that we could snap our fingers and end your fears. That would not be honest. We have hundreds of millions of guns in this country, and some of them are owned by people who are not mentally stable. So what we have got to do is, without promising you any magic solution, is at least do the best that we can do. And that makes sure, that is, to make sure that nobody in this country should own a gun, should have a gun unless they are able to use that gun properly and not be a danger to society. And that means expanding background checks. Not a radical idea. It means doing away with the gun show loophole. You know what that is? It means right now, if you're going to purchase a gun, and you go to a gun store, you've got to fill out your forms, and they do a background check on you. But you can go to, in many states, a gun show and buy a gun without having that background check. Okay? It means doing away with the straw man provision, by which you can legally purchase guns, a lot of guns, and then start selling those guns to people who should not be having those guns. In my view, this is a controversial perspective, I believe we should ban assault weapons in And in addition, I'll get back to the question that Rebecca raised. And that is, if people are homicidal, we need to know about it, and we need to make sure that they get the treatment that they need and that they are under observation so that we don't have people, you know, one day doing a terrible thing in a school or anything else. So this is a problem, and I thank you for raising it. When we talk about gun violence in America and mass shootings, I think sometimes we underappreciate what this has done to the young people of this country and the fears that they have. Kids should go to school feeling good, they should concentrate on their education and their socialization, they should not have to be worried about some lunatic walking in and shooting up the school. Okay, I see a hand way in the back there.
My name is Beverly, and I'm on the fence as far as you or Biden. And I liked what I heard today. How are you different than Biden? What does he offer?
Let me answer that in a couple of ways. Joe Biden is a friend of mine, and we worked together on some issues when he was vice president and President Obama. So I like Joe. And I want to make this point, that I hope very much, and I believe it's the case, that the many, I think we're up to 20 Democrats... the many, I think we're up to 20 Democratic candidates, will disagree on issues. That's what, that's what an election process is about. You have to hear what candidates say, what they've done with their lives, where they want to take the country, and you make your judgment. But I hope very much, and I believe it will be the case, and I, and I say this as somebody who not only knows Joe Biden pretty well, but who knows many of the other candidates quite well. Many of them are personal friends of mine who served with me in the Senate. They're friends, and they're good people. And I think what we have got to show the world is that we can run a serious primary process without trying to destroy each other, without character attacks. And then, and then, when it is all over, needless to say, I hope I win. I'm sure Biden hopes that he wins, and others hope that they win. I think we should all be very clear that we're going to come together to defeat the most dangerous president in the modern history of this country. And I think you're going to see that. And knowing, knowing many of the people in the Democratic primary, I think that that is, I think will make you proud, in the sense that there will be a vigorous debate over issues, but not ugly personal attacks. Now, let me just say a word about Joe Biden. And this is all that I'll say, and this is part of the record. There's nothing that you don't know probably already. I think that the trade policies that we have had in this country for several decades now have been disastrous for American workers and for farmers. And I helped lead the effort against NAFTA, which I thought would be a disaster, drive wages down. And I helped lead the effort against permanent normal trade relations with China. It turns out that those two trade agreements ended up costing us about 4 million jobs and also moving us in a race to the bottom. Because if employers and large corporations could find cheap labor abroad, they could say to American workers, "If you don't like the cut that I'm giving you in healthcare, we're going to go to Mexico." Okay? So, I think we've lost about 4 million jobs and depressed wages in America. I led the effort against those trade agreements. Joe voted for them. I would tell you that maybe the most significant vote that members of Congress have taken in recent years was on the war in Iraq. I have to tell you that I did not believe what Dick Cheney and George W. Bush were saying. I thought that they were lying. And I thought that us getting involved in that war would lead not only to the loss of significant American lives, and thousands of brave men and women have died, not only have tens of thousands suffered post-traumatic stress disorder, but that it would bring mass dislocation in the region. And I had to say, I was right. So, I helped lead the effort, did everything that I could. Go to YouTube and hear what I had to say on the floor of the House with regard to the war in Iraq. I voted against it. Joe voted for it. I voted against the Graham Leach-Bliley bill, which deregulated Wall Street and which allowed mergers to take place, which many economists believe resulted in the terrible recession as a result of the Wall Street crash. I voted against it. Joe voted for it. So, I don't want to go on and on. Joe is a very decent guy. He's a friend of mine. We have differences of opinion, and you all will make your own decisions. All right, last question.
Senator, my name's Megan. I am cautious about the $15 raise. And the reason being is, I am an employer. I own a small business. And I do everything in my power to provide as much as I can for my employers. But my caution is how, as a business owner, I am going to pay for this raise, as well as how the raise will affect my own products as well. So, if you could say that a little bit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Fair question. Megan, the simple truth is that the purchasing power of the minimum wage today is much lower than it used to be. And what we are seeing is millions of people working at wages, through no fault, I'm not a criticism of you, but who are working at wages that is very hard for them to live in. I was just in Des Moines two days ago, and a woman was there, working for Dunkin' Donuts, making 11 bucks an hour, two kids, and spending half of her income on housing. So, the minimum wage, which is now seven and a quarter an hour, I have to say, is a starvation wage. There's nobody can make it. Now, I know, you know, many people don't make seven and a quarter. They may make nine bucks an hour or 10 bucks an hour. But one thing that I will say to you, I think, for a start, if people work 40 hours a week in this country, they deserve not to live in poverty. Second point, when we raise the minimum wage, it's not going to be just you who's going to see wages go up. It's going to be all of your competitors as well. All right? So, you're not going to be at a disadvantage. They're going to have to pay the same wage as you are. But the bottom line is that the great crisis of our economy right now is that we have so many people forced to work two or three jobs for inadequate wages. And I think we have got to move toward a living wage. I think that a fair wage is, in fact, $15 an hour. All right, let me thank you all for coming out. Great turnout. Thank you very, very much. Thank you.